Ladies and gentlemen, thanks for coming tonight. We will be with you in just a moment. We're going to, we're waiting on something to upload for the system so that you have more pictures and such. So if you just bear with us one second, we'll get started. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the planning and zoning meeting for the city of Smyrna. Today is Monday, July 13th, 2015. It's 6:00 PM and this meeting is called to order. At this time, we'd like to ask that all electronic devices be turned off as it interferes with our recording equipment. For those who are joining us for the first time, and by the look of the number of people in here, we've got quite a few first timers, this meeting is going to be held very similar to a council meeting. As such, each application will include a presentation from city staff, followed by a question and answer session between staff and the board. Following staff's presentation, we'll have the applicant present their case and answer any questions. Once all the questions have been satisfied, we'll have an opportunity for anyone in attendance to, that would like to come forward and speak in favor of or opposition to the application. We ask that you come forward one at a time, state your name and address for the record, and sign the sign-in sheet at the podium. So please direct all your comments to the board. All right, we've got several items on our agenda tonight. I believe there's seven. Of the seven, we only have two items that we're actually going to take action on tonight. The remaining items are going to be tabled for this meeting. So we're going to go through our agenda and table all the items in front of the actionable items, just as a matter of procedure, so that we can move on to the items that we have to take action on. So if you'll bear with us on that, we will get through it as quickly as possible. The first item on the agenda is Z15-003. This is zoning request, rezoning of the subject property from R15 to RAD conditional for the development of six single-family homes. It's a 1.31 acre track at land lot 592. The address is 1514 Hawthorne Avenue. Applicant is Thule &amp; Thule. This is to be rezoned at the request of the applicant to the August 10th, 2015 Planning and Zoning Meeting. Can we get a motion to table?
I'll make a motion, Joel.
Motion, Mr. Kemp.
I'd like to make a motion to table zoning request Z15-003 until August 10th, Planning and Zoning Board Meeting.
Motion, Mr. Kemp, second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Whittington. All in favor, please vote. Items tabled 7-0. The next item on our agenda is annexation zoning request Z15-004. It is rezoning from R20 Cobb County to RAD conditional Smyrna for the development of 17 townhomes. This is located at 980 and 990 Pebblebrook Road. The applicant is Jesse Maxwell Jr. This zoning request is to be tabled at the request of the applicant to the August 10th, 2015 Planning and Zoning Meeting. Can we get a motion to table this item, please?
Yes, on zoning request Z15-004, I'll make a motion to table till August 10th.
Motion, Mr. Rice, to table, second. Second, Mr. Campo. All in favor? Successfully tabled 7-0. All right, the next item on our agenda is Z15-012, annexation and rezoning and zoning amendment for the construction of a 250-unit independent senior housing development. This is a 4.8 acre track at land lot 691. The address is 4840 and 4788 Hanson Drive. The applicant, Creekside Village Development Incorporated. This item has been requested to be tabled at, by the applicant, to the August 10th, 2015 meeting. Can we get a motion to table? Motion, Mr. Rice, second. Second, Mr. Seagraves, all in favor? We're missing somebody. Mr. Campo? Denny? Need you to vote, please. Thank you. It's approved 7-0. All right. The next item on our agenda is an actionable item, but we are going to skip this item and we're going to come back to it as the first actionable item, once we get through the tabling. Okay. So the next item on our agenda is Z15-015. This is approval of zoning amendment to modify the currently approved site plan and building elevations. 1.61 acres at land lot 634. This is 1680 Roswell Street. Christopher and Yvonne are the applicant. I'm going to leave it there. Zoning request is to be tabled at the request of the applicant to the August 10th, 2015 meeting. May, can we get a motion to table? Motion to table, Mr. Kemp?
I'd like to make a motion to table zoning request Z15-015 until the August 10th Planning and Zoning Meeting.
Second, Mr. Roberts. Please vote. It's approved 7-0. All right. The next item on our agenda is going to be tabled as well, but we are going, this is not going to be a public hearing. This is for Z15-014. It's the approval of a zoning amendment to modify the currently approved site plan and building elevations, 12.62 acres at land lot 559. This is the northeast corner of the intersection at Atlanta Road and Spring Road. The applicant is Halpern Enterprises. Now, this item is going to be tabled to the August 10th, 2015 meeting at the request of city staff. Now, this is not a public hearing, but we are going to go ahead and let, for public information reasons, let Mr. Sudrith do a presentation and explain why we're tabling this issue tonight. Mr. Sudrith?
Thank you, Chairman. I did ask, and I am asking you to consider tabling this request, simply to allow staff additional time to evaluate the proposal. There's no negative issues, one way or the other, regarding this table. It's just, given the way the process works, when somebody submits, staff will look at it. We will make suggestions in areas that we feel may need to be approved. The applicant then has the decision whether he wants to move forward with that. They indeed decided they were going to do some additional improvements. We got those improvements in Wednesday night to address our concerns, and we're thankful for that. But given that the meeting was right upon us and we had to get the information out, obviously, we couldn't finish the review on the modified plan with that. So that's why this is coming from city staff to ask for this. The applicant is aware of this recommendation already. But that being the case, since we are doing this, I felt it's important, at least, to let the public know exactly what we have on file. A lot of people probably already know what we have because they've come by the office or they attended a meeting that the applicant actually hosted last Thursday. But for the record's sake, I wanted to at least let everybody know what's on the table, and then we will do an official recommendation for you at your, at your August meeting. And then it will go to council, as indicated on the screen, August 17th. Again, this is, the applicant is Halpern Enterprises. This is a MU, which is a mixed-use zoning classification. In this case, it's an MU conditional. The zoning would stay the same, but the conditions are being modified with that. There is no change in our existing land use plan because the proposed land use is indeed a mixed-use classification already. Just some real quick history. The property received this MU classification back in 2007. It actually had a general commercial and a light industrial classification on it. And that project was known as Jonkwo Village. At that point, it consisted of 188,000 square feet of commercial space, 29,000 square feet of office, and 300 residential economy slash luxury apartments in six buildings over an underground parking deck. In 2008, the Urban Design Commission approved the architectural plans, meaning the facades, and it was, it was ready to go. Obviously, if you look at the date of March 2008, that was right before the economy fell off that summer. I can tell you for a fact exactly where it hit the office. It hit in August of 2008. So those familiar with the site, they did start pouring the supports for the parking garage and never were able to go any further on that. The property sat vacant for years. There was another prospective buyer that came through in 2013, and ultimately, in December of 2013, a different plan from the original plan, and different than the one that we, that we even have today, came through, and on December 2nd, a 2013 council voted to deny that plan. Shortly after that denial, the applicant ended up being in negotiations with the previous property owner, and ultimately, Halpern Enterprises was able to purchase the property. So that's sort of how we got to today. So what they're proposing is a continuation of a mixed-use project. It's at a lesser density and intensity than that Jonkwo Village plan. The proposed project will have 65,000 square feet of space, which is a combination of actually having a grocer in there, a freestanding retail component, which in this case is at the corner of Atlanta Road and Spring. It would, it would be on both corners, sort of wrap around the corner with, with a open area between the two buildings, as well as a freestanding restaurant. And then they are continuing the luxury apartment aspect, although they're doing 290 as opposed to 300 that was previously approved. So that's what is on the table. Now, with regard to what the project looks like, I will get to those slides in just a second. I had already mentioned that from a future land, a future development map, we didn't have to make any changes. It was consistent with what was already on the board and had been approved by council. And this is the currently approved plan. I'm sure many people have seen this plan. You know, there'd be a feature at the intersection of Spring and Atlanta. This plan had a grocer establishment, as well as retail up on Atlanta Road, and a combination of retail with residential uses above those uses, as well as office uses as well. These were the elevations that I said had gotten approved in 2008. And this is the proposed site plan we have. There's still a retail component at the corner, although, as already stated, it is less intense. There's still some kind of feature that would be at the intersection there, sort of to act as a gateway. And then the apartments off of the Spring Road side of the development. In this, they are proposing a parking deck on one side that serves basically just the apartments. There may be some public parking in there. We're still working that out. But there's, these apartments are not sitting on top of these parking deck. The parking deck is attached, but to the side of it. As you can see, in the center of the property, you have a grocery store that is proposed. And then to the far north of the project, you have another freestanding restaurant with that. So that's what we have. Here are some proposed billing, building elevations. Again, these elevations came in late last week that we are evaluating, but I can tell you that they indeed addressed, started to address a lot of the concerns that we had expressed earlier to the applicant. Again, this shows you, the upper right actually shows you a combination of things. It shows you the corner of Atlanta and Spring, the little open area. You've got one of the retail, well, actually, you can see both of the retail buildings there. On these two, they, these two ends, they are proposing a restaurant with roof, rooftop seating on that. In the distance, you can see the proposed apartments. The next slide that's on here shows you the apartments. And then the slide at the bottom obviously shows you what their proposed architectural look at, is at the moment of their grocer. So staff is indeed recommending that this request be tabled to the August 10th Planning and Zoning Meeting to allow staff, again, additional and adequate time to review the submitted plans. This will still, for, for all parties, this is still on the same review cycle. It originally was scheduled to go to mayor and council August 17th. That is still the same date. That date doesn't change. We're just getting to that date a little bit different. What will happen is, Planning Commission understands this, but the audience may not. Because it's in the downtown area, there's another level of review. It's under what's called our urban design guidelines. And as part of those guidelines, an urban design commission has been created and has been in existence for years. They have the authority to review any plans within the downtown area, which is basically classified as the intersection of Spring, Atlanta, north to Windy Hill on Atlanta Road. So whether it has to do with facades, or new buildings, or signage, or, you know, painting, colors, all of those kind of issues go to the urban design. And they're recommending body just like you, so that their recommendation also be brought into council. Normally, that meeting would occur between the Planning Commission and mayor and council. But because we're asking for a table tonight, that meeting will stay on track, which is next Tuesday, the 21st here in this building. They will meet just to review the architectural aspects and how they compare to the design guidelines. This isn't an issue of use. They're not, they're not dealing with it as a use issue. It's strictly a design issue on the outside of the building. Then that recommendation, because we are coming back to you August 10th, you also have a recommendation from them when you get a recommendation from staff as well. So that meeting, you'll have two recommendations. And then you will do what Joel has said we're not doing tonight, which is correct, is a true public meeting, public hearing aspect, and go through our normal process. All three of those recommendations, staff's, UDC's, and yours, will then go to mayor and council for that August 17th meeting. So I hope I've made that somewhat clear. I know it's a little bit different than the normal one meeting with us, the next meeting with the mayor and council. But in this case, I think it's appropriate, and as the director of the department, I felt was, indeed, was necessary to handle it this way. I'm happy to answer any questions regarding this, but that's where we are today.
Thank you, Mr. Sudrith. Any questions? All right, like I said, this is not a public hearing, so we're just going to move straight to a motion to table this item. And for those of you that have forgotten, it's item Z15-014.
Yeah, I make a motion to table Z15-014, the 12.62 acres on land lot 559.
Motion, Mr. Roberts, second. Ms. Lightfoot, all in favor? Please vote. It's approved 7-0. Another successful tabling. Right. All right, I guess that's it. Y'all ready? No, I'm joking, sorry. All right, the item we skipped earlier, we're going to go back to that item now. It is item Z15-013. This is the zoning request from limited commercial to R15 for the construction of a single-family home. It's a .363 acre at land lot 520. This is 2645 Hickory Hill Drive. Applicant is Joseph Cuskey. Mr. Martin, in the background, please.
Good evening. This rezoning request will be heard tonight. You guys will make a recommendation for the mayor and council. It'll be heard by the mayor and council at the August 17th Plan Zone, or Mayor and Council meeting. This property is located at 2645 Hickory Hill Drive. The current zoning on the property is limited commercial. This property abuts city-owned property and the, the city police station on, on the southeast side. Currently on site, there's one single-family home. The applicant is proposing to demo that existing home and rebuild their personal home. They're requesting a rezoning to R15 conditional. I'll go over the conditional part when we get to the site plan. The future land use designation for the property is moderate-density residential. They are not proposing to change that land use classification at all. As you can see, to the north, south, and west, has the same land use classification, a moderate-density residential. All the properties to the east have a mixed-use classification. This is the proposed site plan. And what makes this R15 rezoning conditional? The applicant is requesting a seven-foot side setback on, on the south property border. Basically, the side setback for the R15 zoning district is 10 feet, so they're asking for essentially a three-foot reduction. And that is mainly due to the home orientation being perpendicular to the street and the lot being skewed a little bit. So it makes that southern side protrude into the, into the setback slightly. Here's the proposed home elevations. Picture of the subject property as it stands today. And here's the pictures of the adjacent properties. Picture up in the top left-hand corner is a picture of the property that adjoins to the north. Right, top right-hand corner is the property directly across Hickory Hill Drive. And then the bottom two pictures are the police station that abuts the subject property. Committee Development recommends approval of the rezoning of the subject property from LC to R15 conditional for one single-family home at a density of 2.75 units per acre with the following conditions. Number one, all utilities within the development should be underground. Number two, the developer shall be responsible for any traffic improvements deemed necessary by city engineer. Number three, no debris may be buried on any lot or common area. Number four, the developer will comply with the city's current tree ordinance. Number five, all landscape plans must be prepared, stamped, and signed by a Georgia-registered landscape architect. Number six, all yards and common areas are to be sotted in landscape. Number, special conditions. Number seven, the development shall maintain the following minimum setbacks. Minimum front setback of 35 feet, a minimum north side setback of 10 feet, a minimum south side setback of 7 feet, and a minimum rear setback of 30. The homes shall have a minimum floor area of 1,800 square feet. The driveway shall have a minimum length of 22 feet from building face to back sidewalk. The new proposed homes shall not exceed two stories in height. And number 11, the right-of-way along Hickory Hill Drive shall be increased to 50 feet. Therefore, a dedication of 10 feet is required along Hickory Hill Drive. Number 12, the developer shall provide a five-foot sidewalk, two-foot grass buffer along Hickory Hill Drive. 13, the applicant shall provide a drainage easement to convey stormwater across the property. The city engineer shall review and approve all, approve the size and location of the easement. And number 14, approval of the subject property for the R15 conditional zoning district shall be conditioned upon the site plan submitted with the rezoning application. And number 15, applicant shall be bound to the elevation submitted with the rezoning application. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
So Rusty, just for a point of clarity, you calling it R15 conditional just because of the variance that's associated with it? So another way of saying it would be this is an R15 zoning. We're going to go get a variance for that three feet?
Yes, and it's, and it's going to be site plan-specific.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Martin? Okay. Is the applicant in attendance? Please come forward and tell us a little bit about your plan. Hi, welcome to Smyrna.
Hello. Do I need to sign in here?
Please. Yeah, we're all about the document here, so if you could state your name and address for the record and sign the sign-in sheet, that'd be glorious.
So I'm Joey Cuskey. I currently reside at 2053 Hatteras Way in Atlanta. We purchased this property last year with the intention of building on it, as you've heard a little bit about. I wasn't aware that it was limited commercial at the time, so, you know, we're going through the process to try to basically use the property as it's used today, which is being used for residential purposes today. The house we're constructing is for us. It's not, it's not a spec home. It's not to sell. And I did actually have a question regarding the stipulations. One of the stipulations was a sidewalk, and there aren't any sidewalks on that street today. So the sidewalk would kind of run into nowhere because it would run into a city fence, and it would just go in front of our house. So I was curious about the sidewalk requirement we can put it in for sure.
We're a big fan of sidewalks to nowhere here in Smyrna. I don't know if you've been around a good bit, but that's a fair question. Rusty, you want to answer it, or do you want to?
He would only be required to install the sidewalk for the
of the variance that's associated with it? So another way of saying it would be this is an R15 zoning. We're going to go get a variance for that three feet?
Yes. And it's going to be site plan-specific.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Martin? Okay. Is the applicant in attendance? Could you please come forward and tell us a little bit about your plan? Hi, welcome to Smyrna.
Hello. Do I need to sign in here?
Please. Yeah, we're all about the document here, so if you could state your name and address for the record and sign the sign-in sheet, that'd be glorious.
So I'm Joey Cuskey. I currently reside at 2053 Hatteras Way in Atlanta. We purchased this property last year with the intention of building on it, as you've heard a little bit about. I wasn't aware that it was limited commercial at the time, so, you know, we're going through the process to try to basically use the property as it's used today, which is being used for residential purposes today. The house we're constructing is for us. It's not a spec home. It's not to sell. And I did actually have a question regarding the stipulations. One of the stipulations was a sidewalk, and there aren't any sidewalks on that street today. So the sidewalk would kind of run into nowhere because it would run into a city fence, and it would just go in front of our house. So I was curious about the sidewalk requirement we can put it in for sure.
We're a big fan of sidewalks to nowhere here in Smyrna. I don't know if you've been around a good bit, but that's a fair question. Rusty, you want to answer it, or do you want to?
He would only be required to install the sidewalk for the length of his property.
Right.
Even though there's not a sidewalk on the adjoining property to the north, the sidewalk for the trade and development comes down Hickory Hill on that side. So the city could fill in potentially that one
Right.
piece of property in between there, and you would have connectivity for the whole street at that point.
Okay.
You can make an argument, you know, for it right now and say, you know, I really don't want to put in this sidewalk, and it might send things down the wrong aisle, considering they've recommended approval with that stipulated. So, and if and when somebody does acquire the property next year and goes through the same process, all of a sudden, you do have a sidewalk to somewhere because they're going to be required to continue that.
That makes sense. I'll just invest in another bucket of sidewalk chalk for the kids.
There you go. Excellent. Anything else you want to tell us about your plan? Is it for you guys to live in?
Yes.
Sweet. Well, truly welcome to Smyrna. And feel free to tell us anything you want to tell us about it, but that's it?
I mean, the property had the plan. It's going to be approximately 3,300 square feet with a basement that will be finished below it.
Excellent. Excellent, very good. Thank you, Mr. Cuskey. This is a public hearing. If there's anyone in attendance that would like to speak in favor of or opposition to this application, now is the time. All right, let the record show there's no one in attendance. I did not open it for questions from Mr. Cuskey. Does anybody have any questions for him? I just kind of talked right over all y'all. Thank you very much. All right. Can we get a motion? Had a motion from Mr. Kemp.
Yes.
To approve?
I'd like to make a motion for zoning request, Z15-013, for approval.
Got a motion to approve. Mr. Kemp, we got a second. Mr. Roberts, please vote. Your project's approved 7-0. All right. The next item on our agenda is zoning request, Z15-007. This is a rezoning from R20 to RAD conditional for the development of 16 single-family homes. It is a 6.15-acre tract in landlot 338. The address, 3744 Plumcrest Road. The applicant is Venture Homes. And Mr. Martin, the background, please.
All right. If you all remember at the last PNZ meeting, you guys heard this request and made a recommendation for denial by a vote of four to three. Since that meeting, the applicant held a town hall meeting and allowed the residents to come view their plans and see what was going on. At that town hall meeting, there were plenty of comments made. The applicant made some changes to the plan. The Community Development Director reviewed those changes and thought they were significant enough to warrant coming back to PNZ since there was a split vote on this request. So we'll go over those changes and go over the rezoning again and have the public hearing. You guys will hear it tonight, and then it'll go to Mayor and Council at the August 17th Just to refresh your memory, and here's a significant change. This property is located at 3744 Plumcrest Road. One of the significant changes to the plan was that the applicant removed the portion of the property that was located, that fronted on Havlin Way in Richland Court. Basically, taking the size of the property being rezoned from 6.1 acres down to 5.6 acres. So they essentially lost half an acre for the rezoning request. And what is reflected up there in light blue is now the new property boundary for the zoning request. There are currently two single-family residences on these properties, and the applicant is proposing to build 15 residences. So that is a reduction in one resident or one home from the 16 homes that was originally approved, or originally proposed. So the density of the project has changed from 2.61 units per acre to 2.67 units per acre. So it's increased the density slightly. The applicant is requesting rezoning from R20 to RAD conditional. Here is the future development map. They're not proposing any changes to the suburban residential land use designation. They're under the cap of three units per acre, so there's no change necessary. And as you can see, all the surrounding properties are all suburban residential as well. This is the proposed site plan. It's a little tough to see, but basically, all 15 lots are now around the cul-de-sac and on this private road. There are no lots that front on Havlin or Richland. And basically, the lots, the minimum lot sizes remain the same at 9,000 square feet from the original request. However, their average lot size has gone up from 10,500 square feet up to about 11,200 square feet. The blue circle is where the location of detention pond, the fuchsia color that came in. This is the proposed location of the stormwater improvements to Plumcrest Road from the subject property to Highview. Basically, they'll be taking all the water from that detention facility, putting it into a pipe, and that pipe will run all the way under Plumcrest Road to Highview Drive and then enter into the city's stormwater system at that point. The green is the open space for the property. It's approximately 6,300 square feet. It exceeds the minimum requirements for an RAD zoning. These are the proposed home elevations for the property. Pictures of the subject property. Pictures of adjoining properties. Community Development recommends approval of the rezoning request from R20 to RAD conditional for, I'm sorry, I didn't change that from the last rezoning meeting. 15 single-family residences at 2.67 units per acre with the following conditions. Number one, the composition of the homes in the residential subdivision shall include a mixture of elements, including but not limited to bricks, stone, shake, hardy plank, and stucco. Number two, the developer shall provide a vegetated buffer with a minimum width 20 feet, parallel to any right-of-way external to the development. There should be a protective covenants with a mandatory HOA for the subdivision. Four, the developer shall provide at least 200 square feet of common space per lot. Number five, the detention facility shall be placed and screened appropriately to be unobtrusive to homes inside and outside the development. The stormwater detention plan shall be designed to create at least a 10% reduction in a two-year to 100-year storm event. City engineers shall review and approve all plans. Number six, all utilities within the development shall be underground. Number seven, the developer shall be responsible for any traffic improvements deemed necessary by the city engineer. Number eight, a strip of brick pavers or stamped concrete shall be installed on the street at the subdivision entrance for a minimum distance of 20 feet. Number nine, the development of any streets shall meet city standards. Number 10, no debris may be buried on any lot or common area. Number 11, developer will install decorative streetlights within the development. Number 12, the developer will comply with the city's current tree ordinance. Number 13, all landscape plans must be prepared, stamped, and signed by a Georgia-registered landscape architect. Number 14, all yards and common areas are to be sotted in landscape. Number 15 is basically a tree planting schedule for each lot. Number 16, the development shall maintain the following minimum setbacks. A front setback of 30 feet, an interior side of 5 feet, an exterior side, which applies to lot 1 and 15, of 25 feet, a rear setback of 30. The development shall, number 17, the development shall be developed with a minimum lot size of 9,000 square feet. Number 18, the proposed homes shall have a minimum floor area of 2,100 square feet. Number 19, 15 new homes shall be accessed from the new proposed public road. Number 20, the developer shall install a five-foot sidewalk with two-foot grass buffer inside and outside the development. Number 21, the driveway shall have a minimum length of 22 feet from building face to back sidewalk. 22, the developer shall be responsible for any water and sewer improvements deemed necessary by the Public Works Director for the provision of services to the community. Number 23, the developer shall be responsible for any stormwater improvements deemed necessary by the city engineer. And this is where we're discussing the improvements on Plumcrest. And at a minimum, these improvements need to be installed prior to grading and development on the site. So that way, the water, while they're developing the site, will get into the city system. Number 24, no stormwater management facility or portion thereof should be located on any portion of the proposed lots. The stormwater management facility shall solely be located on HOA property. The developer shall provide a 10-foot landscape buffer along the perimeter of the property in accordance with the city's tree ordinance and Section 503 of the zoning ordinance. Number 26, all trees within the limits of disturbance and not located within the tree protection area must be removed during land clearing and grading phase of the development. Number 27, approval of the subject property for residential attached-detached shall be conditioned upon the development of the property in substantial compliance with the site plan submitted and dated July 6, 2015. And 28, applicant shall be bound to the elevation submitted with the rezoning application. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Martin? All right. Thank you, Mr. Martin. You want to stay close? I'm sure we'll have some questions for you. At this time, I'd like to ask the applicant to come forward. Mr. Randall, welcome back.
Thank you. All right. How do I? Let's see. Page up, page down.
You just want to do the slideshow?
Yeah, but, yeah, that'd be perfect.
Just hit this button, forward, and that'll take you.
And then that's back?
That'll take you back.
Sorry.
All right.
I'm the most technology-challenged person in the room, I'm sure. Sean Randall, Venture Homes, Chief Operating Officer. My address is 1580 Tarrill Mill Road, Suite 100, Marietta 30067. Pleased to be back in front of the commission this evening. I think we've got a very exciting plan to show you guys, and we're proud of the progress we've made. Venture Homes is headquartered here in Cobb County. We're the second-largest builder in the county by unit volume. Bob White started Venture Homes 30 years ago with one house in Mableton, Georgia. We are committed to Cobb County. We're committed to Smyrna, and we're very pleased to be here to present an application for this 5.61 acres to rezone from R20 to RAD conditional. And yes, I'm sure you're going to sit here this a lot tonight. I just wanted to be the first one to say it. Rad is bad. But only when missed applied. And I think we have gone overboard to try to make sure that we're good neighbors and that we will apply this zoning category in a proper and forthright manner. All zoning categories, and I don't need to tell you all, all zoning categories, if missed applied, are bad. But this rad category serves a useful and beneficial service to the city of Smyrna. Is this bad? North Cooper Lake Place, zoned RAD.
Ladies and gentlemen, please, let him present his application.
Park at North Cooper Lake Place, zoned RAD. Austin Lake, zoned RAD. I think so. Now, that, I don't know. I think that's zoned RAD, but I think that might be zoned AP amusement park. But anyway, I don't know if that's a nod to the Naval Air Station, but I just, driving around, I thought that was very interesting. But the common thread here is all these properties are zoned RAD. All these properties empty into the North Cooper Lake Road corridor. They're all self-contained, mini or major developments. 15, 18. Austin Lake is 96 units. I believe that's correct. And I think they all serve a good and useful function, and I think the RAD serves a good and useful function. I won't go into a lot of the details. I think Rusty did a great job of explaining the changes we've made, but we did try to listen to the folks behind me, and we've had several meetings with folks, and we heard loud and clear three major issues. And there's some offshoots and some minor things that are part of that, but we heard loud and clear negative impact on Bennett Woods and Pineview Manor. We heard loud and clear storm drain. What's going to happen with the storm drainage? And then we heard loud and clear screening, tree buffers, McMansions towering over product that was built in the 1960s. But just like all those communities that has been zoned by this city, and I assume supported by this Planning Commission, we are self-contained, we're going to be high-quality, and we're going to be, try to be as best we can, a good neighbor to all of our neighbors. So I won't spend a lot of time on the storm drainage, but I think it's safe to say, based on the last study that we've done, and Eric Randall reminded me, you know, we've got to meet 90% of the pre-development threshold. Right now, our 100-year storm is projected at 25% of the pre-development threshold. If Bennett Woods had been built to these standards back in the 60s, we probably wouldn't be having this conversation. We're not only meeting the city standards, we're vastly exceeding those city standards. And we're glad to do that because it's the right thing to do. So we won't front any traffic. We won't put any new excess traffic into Bennett Woods. Totally self-contained. We've pulled the houses off Havlin and Richland Circle. We, Rusty didn't mention it, but we're putting in an open-air pavilion with a fireplace. Don't have to do that, but we're doing that as part of our open space. But the other thing that we're doing is we're creating, and I apologize, these maps are incredibly hard to read to such small scale, but we've gone ahead and put a 10-foot tree preservation easement around the entire perimeter of the property. What does that mean? That means our homeowners cannot cut down a tree within the first 10 feet of the property without homeowner association approval. This guarantees in perpetuity that we're going to try to keep some screening there. The other thing that we're doing is we've modified the tree save plan around lots 1 through 11, as much as we possibly could. We're going to retain at least a 25-foot non-clearing buffer as well throughout the development process. Now, we may have to get into that. We've heard from the Pineview people that there's, you know, drought. We've heard from the Pineview people that there's, you know, drainage and stormwater problems on the north side, so we may have to get into some of that to clean up some of those problems. But our goal is to stay out of that twenty-five foot. So ten, ten-foot in perpetuity, twenty-five foot through the development process. And if you look at this, and again, I apologize for such a grainy, uh, photo, I just actually blew up what the city gave me. My, my land planner's working on right now, trying to overlay, uh, so when we go to council, we can overlay this perimeter of our property. The real problem, in my view, from a screening standpoint, occurs behind our lots projected nine and 10, to the house that's on the right-hand side of Richland Circle. That's a side entry, I believe it's a side-entry garage. The house is fairly close to the property line. Uh, we'll be glad to work with the city arborist on some evergreen screening in back of lots nine and 10 as part of our tree commitment to the community, uh, and, and try to make that screening as, as dense and evergreen as possible. So again, in kind of summary, we're proposing a very high-quality mini-development. And let me stress, Venture Homes is not a flipper. We don't buy land, develop it, flip it. We buy and build. Um, and one thing I, I probably don't have to remind this commission, Smyrna land prices, the recession is over. It's full value. It's more than full value. Prices are in excess of what was being paid in 2006, 2007. What does that mean? You're going to increasingly see increasing density. But with that, we are putting, excluding the land purchase, we're putting in over eight-hundred-thousand dollars of infrastructure, state-of-the-art infrastructure, water systems, roads. Uh, I, I know our roads, the depth of the subgrade, the depth of the pavement, the quality of the curb and gutter, much better than was built even five, 10 years ago. That's just a city requirement. The cul-de-sacs in Smyrna, by the fire code, are, are wider, bigger than the cul-de-sacs required in Cobb County. That's just what you have to do to do business in Smyrna. We will put seven million dollars' worth of new homes on the tax roll. Now, we're not doing this because we're altruistic and we want to give money away. Of course, we want to make a profit. And we have to make a profit. Otherwise, I won't be here next, you know, hopefully in the next six months trying to zone another piece of property. We think the site plan is significantly better. This project is in compliance with future land use. Uh, it's obtained staff approval not once, but twice. Uh, our density, and I'm sure you're going to hear a lot about that tonight, our density is 2.67 per acre. The average of the four communities that I mentioned, running up and down North Cooper Lake Road, the most recent big additions, 2.66. We are lower density than every other community with the exception of Austin Lake. We are improving the storm drain. Uh, and we are improving the screening. Uh, I want to stress one thing, and I'm sure the commission realizes this, anytime we take down a specimen tree, we have to plant one inch for one inch. And I realize, I'm not naive enough to think, we take down a 12-inch oak, planting three, four-inch oaks doesn't replace that. But over time, it will. The other thing that, that, so every, every specimen tree that we take down, inch for inch, we have to replace. In addition, we have to give the city 100 inches per acre, caliber inches per acre, over and above what we're required to plant in front of houses, et cetera, et cetera. So I want to make everyone aware, I have a tremendous economic incentive to save every tree I can possibly save. So if I don't cut a tree down, I, I pull those clearing limits out, and I save that tree, it can often be counted towards this hundred, uh, 100 inches per acre. Um, the, the other thing I just wanted to touch on is, uh, we met the arborists with, uh, Bill and Judy Cohn, who live on Plumcrest, who have a 110-year-old red oak. Um, and the arborist assured us that if this project gets approved, we go down, um, Plumcrest, that we should have minimal impact on the, on the oak tree. As part of that meeting, I agreed, the arborist said we didn't necessarily need to, but I agreed to bring him back out when we're doing the improvement in front of their house. Not only make sure we do the roots every justice we possibly can, but I, I think it'll be the time of year where we can actually treat the tree with some special, what they call deep-root injections, and, and Venture's willing to do that. We are committed to this city. We've got a million-and-a-half-dollar investment, and we haven't even gone vertical yet, and we're not through with the development on Church Road, now probably a mile and a half away. Here's some of the product that it, that's planned for this community. And so I, I guess I conclude by saying rad really isn't bad if, if it's given a shot. We think this project will have substantial impact. Because of the current economic environment, you are going to see densities increase. But we're absolutely in line with what this city has done in the past, the recent past and, and, and the not-so-distant past. And therefore, I would respectfully ask that you approve this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Randall. Are there any questions for the applicant at this time? All right. If you want to just take a seat close by.
Thank you.
I had a feeling.
Yep. Thank you.
Might need some input from you going forward. All right. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing. Um, so if you would, excuse me, one second. At this time, we'd like to open the floor to anyone that would like to speak in favor of or opposition to this application. Uh, please come forward one at a time, state your name and address for the record, and please sign in the sign-in sheet at the podium. Please direct your comments to, uh, the board. Thank you so much. Good evening and welcome.
All right, very quickly, let's see. I'll talk while I write. My name is Charles Hunter. I'm, I do not live in Bennett Woods. I live in Austin Lake, and I'm on the Board of Directors. I'm the treasurer.
Welcome, Mr. Hunter.
And I was here last time, and I won't speak quite as long as last time. Yes, Austin Lake is, uh, zoned RAD, he's correct, but none of the homes look anything like what he's proposing. These homes are, uh, most of them are going to be 10 feet apart, and from what I understand is now he's taken the two homes that were least clustery, I guess, uh, the way they looked, that were, that were kind of out, uh, on the edge of those two, uh, Havlin and Richmond Drives. He's taken that out of the proposal and then adding one more home in the cluster homes, most of which are 10 feet apart. And with the roofs that come off, I don't know how far the roofs are supposed to come off, maybe the roofs are maybe five feet apart, so a three-legged squirrel could probably jump from one house to the other. But, but at the same time, uh, uh, you know, I heard the developer talk about how he heard loud and clear about the impact and, uh, about the tall houses and this sort of thing, and about the water issues and all that. And, uh, that doesn't affect us in Austin Lake, but one thing I didn't hear him talk about is the concerns, and I wasn't at those public meetings, but I have to believe that, that, because from what I've heard, that residents talked about the density, putting those homes that close together in a home that's R20 or, and, and even in, in our subdivision, the, the smallest lots in our subdivision are on Terrace Court. They were a little bit, uh, lower-priced, uh, homes for the subdivision. And even those homes on smaller lots, I think the minimum is 25 feet apart. There's nothing anywhere around that's 10 feet apart that, that's going to be like that. And, uh, you know, the fact that it's zoned RAD, I don't know the history of that, but nothing is built in Austin Lake or the homes up on North Cooper Lake, which are now incorporated into Austin Lake. They, those homes are pretty far apart, too. So we're concerned, we don't want, uh, that type of cluster home. And I will say that we had a board meeting, uh, last, uh, Tuesday, and I don't have it in writing this time, but, uh, uh, we, we, uh, went over the revised, uh, proposal, and we still, all the seven board members, uh, and I think all seven were there, we all unanimously opposed this rezoning and this development. It looks like to me, and I haven't done a scientific survey of it, that all the homeowners are opposed to it. It looks like, maybe there are going to be people that come up that, other than the seller, who has an interest in it, who is a Smyrna resident, although he's going to not be a Smyrna resident once he sells, and the developer who doesn't live in Smyrna, even though he's talked, says he wants to be a good neighbor, he's not really our neighbor. He wants to sell more homes in there because he makes more profit from selling more homes. Nothing wrong with trying to make a profit. I'm, I don't have any problem at all with that, but not to the expense of, of putting a cluster home community right in the middle of, of, uh, of homes on larger lots. I think that's inappropriate. I've looked on the zoning map, it's online, it's really a nice gesture to have all that available for people to look, uh, on the, the excellent city of Smyrna site. And it looks like to me, all the cluster home-type zoning appears to be on the edges of things, or on the edge of the city limits, where it's got county on the other side or something. I don't see anything where these, uh, I, I may have missed something, but I don't really see anything where these, they've taken a, a, a lot, a, a, a place with R20 or R15 or these, this zoning, or the building like we have, uh, with reasonable amounts, and they've put this type of cluster home, uh, in the middle. So, uh, could I ask if, I, I know everybody's not going to speak, and y'all don't want to stay here until nine o'clock, but if anybody's in here, uh, that opposes this, that doesn't plan to speak, or whether you do plan to speak, could you please stand up? So that's your opposition. That's, that's how many people don't want this. And so, uh, you know, it, it may be fine with the zoning, I'm sure the developer builds nice homes and everything, we just don't want the density. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hunter. All right. Please state your name and address for the record, and welcome.
My name is Scott Crooks, uh, live in Bennett Woods, 4049 Winding Valley Drive. Uh, I'm speaking in opposition to this development. Uh, I've also looked at the maps online, and all of the property to the north of development and to the south and to the west is R20. I actually work in commercial real estate. I work with folks like Venture Homes. Um, but this development, it, I'm fine if it stays R20, but I don't see the reason for putting 15 homes on that small a piece of property. I'm fine with the property being redeveloped, but I'm not fine with the density that's being proposed. I think that you're taking the, the character of the neighborhoods around it, and you're, you're, you're lessening. I mean, you know, one of the things that's great about the city is the city's really trying to build a sense of place, and this development, I don't see how this development helps further that cause for the city. And, uh, as a Bennett Wood resident, you know, I, I, my property doesn't abut, but the development, uh, but I still feel that there's, uh, a good chance, uh, that it sets a precedent for that area, and, uh, and I'm speaking in, in disagreement with it.
Thank you for your time, Mr. Crooks. All right. Please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and sign the sign-in sheet.
I'm Robbie Hewitt. I'm also a Bennett Wood residence.
Well, Mr. Hewitt.
I live at 3759 Cloudlin Drive. I don't abut the property, but I do look directly at it. I'm opposed to the density as well. I'm not opposed to the RAD zoning. I'm also opposed to the height limit of the properties. These are three-story structures towering over two-story structures at most. Um, you know, if the developer could cut them down to being to a height limit of the surrounding community, I think that would be a wonderful improvement to the development. I think that the spacing needs to give them at least 15 or 20-foot side setbacks between the structures themselves, seven or, or 10-foot on, on each of the side property lines. I, I just think that he talks about all of the other properties up and down Cooper Lake that have been developed RAD. This development will not come onto Cooper Lake. It'll be a road with signage out front that, as you drive down Cooper Lake, you won't know what's back there, because there are single-family homes that you have to go between to get back to this development. So it's not going to look like a community from the Cooper Lake Road perspective. It's just going to look like a road going back to something. For those of us that have to look at it, it's going to look like monster structures, very out of place, and I'm a real estate agent as well as, people buy in our communities because they like that large space in their lots, they like the woodedness of the properties. If they want something that's high-density, then they're going to go choose something high-density, but they're not going to buy our homes when they have to look at that type of high-density, and it's going to hurt our values. It's going to hurt our opportunity when we go to resell our homes one day, all of those that are near this property. And, and I appreciate his efforts to leave a wooded buffer. His comment about leaving a buffer of 10 feet in perpetuity at the discretion of the homeowners association, I think that should be removed if that's going to go forward on that basis. Should not be at the discretion of the homeowners association if that's going to be in perpetuity. They shouldn't have the opportunity to negate that. Um, I don't see a pen here. If there was one, I'd sign it.
Somebody stole our pen? Mr. Hunter, do you need to come back and give us our pen back?
I, um, I don't want to spend all night here and keep you guys here till 10 o'clock.
I'll donate this pen.
Yeah, I'm just joking with you, sir.
No, I think this is mine, but I'll donate it. Could I put my number down while you're talking?
Thank you very much, Mr. Hewitt. Mr. Hunter, I was just playing with you.
I know.
Thank you for listening to me, and, uh, thank you for voting it down last time. I hope you do the same thing tonight.
All right. We're going to need to leave a pen up there.
I'll, I'll just donate mine, I don't need it.
Make sure we get that off his tax rolls, will you? Come on, come on up. I think Mr. Crooks didn't get a chance to sign.
All right. Yes, my name's Alan Dunn. I was wanting to see if it'd be possible to get Rusty to put the map back up that he used.
Welcome, Mr. Dunn.
What's he got? Like that one, the other. Shows the road going, you know, where my house would be. Zoning, that, that right there. Okay.
Did you get what your name is, Mr. Dunn?
All right. Yes, that's it.
Okay.
I'll, I'll be very brief. Uh, I live at 3726 North Cooper Lake Road. I moved there 28 years ago, and I live right where the, the two driv, currently, the zoning allows for two driveways coming off of North Cooper Lake Road to two building lots up on the hill next to my house. And if this zoning is approved, instead of having two driveways and two houses, I will have, uh, one road, 15 driveways in the road, 15 houses, and a minimum of 30 cars coming up and down the hill by my house. So that's my main concern for myself, the number of cars that we go in up and down by my bedroom window. So I'm opposed for that. I, uh, the water issues that have been raised, I'm concerned that not enough has been done to address the water that will be coming down into North Cooper Lake. Uh, I've talked to Rusty. He said it would be rerouted back up the hill into the retention pond, correct? Eric?
Yep. Let me clarify. This site has three sub-basins, three areas where the water flows.
Okay.
One of those areas goes down the hill towards North, North Cooper Lake Road. Regardless of which direction it goes in, they have to show a peak flow rate of no more than 90% of the existing peak flow rates for our studied storms. So for the most part, the site will be draining to that detention facility, including all the roofs. They're still going to have to show during the plan review that the part that goes down by your house is reduced. Furthermore, I've also spoken with Scott Stokes, he's the Director of Public Works for us, about the issues you brought to my attention about the drainage capacity in North Cooper Lake Road.
Right.
There's not an immediate response to that, other than we're going to look at it, but he is aware of it, and in the same way, we're looking at infrastructure all over the city. We'll get in there, see if something needs to get cleaned out, see if something needs to get redone with that.
Okay.
Ladies and gentlemen, just for the record, this is Eric Randall. He's a city engineer. He didn't introduce himself. We'll work on that later.
Okay. I'm concerned mainly about the, the topography, the way it is a steep hill, and I'm concerned about how the city will address those water issues on North Cooper Lake side. I know you've looked at the Plumcrest and, and, you know, Bennett Woods. I'm concerned mainly for, nothing's been much said about North Cooper Lake.
I, I will look for the applicant and his engineer to address that, to show specifically how they're doing that. Um, just off the cuff, one way maybe is that they put a, they put a storm drain pipe
I understand what they hope to gain from it. I do not believe this RAD fits in the section they're putting it, is surrounded by R-20. You've got Grace Meadows, I'm not sure what is zoned. Austin Lakes is RAD. Then you've got Pine View is R-20. You've got Havelon, R-20. You've got Plumcrest, R-20, and Bennett Woods, R-20. And my house is R-20. I've paid taxes, and we all have. I've paid 28 years, and I have no problem with being R-20. And even if there was a compromise of R-15, it would be better than what they're doing here. And I've got pictures. This weekend, I went around and took pictures of all the surrounding subdivisions of the type houses that are there. And I show where the proposed building site is. And this is not fancy like what they have, but I hope you can understand that right here is where they want to do this. Here is Grace Meadows. This is the type house they have there. This is Austin Lakes. This is North Cooper Lake. This is Concord Lane. This is Pine View. This is Ashley Way. And then you've got Havelon, and then you've got Bennett Woods, and then you've got Plumcrest. If you look at the type houses and the type spacing between the houses, you can see what we're talking about. This is what we want to keep, and we don't want this put in the middle of it. It's just like a donut of R-20, and they want to stick this RAD in the middle of it. And then they want to run it out by my house to get people in and out. And really, that's all I have to say. And thank you for your...
Thank you very much, Mr. Dunn. We really appreciate it. Please hold your applause.
My name is...
I didn't use the gavel this time.
My name is Kelly Johnson. I wanted to jump up here, leave this up here. I live at 622 Austin Drive.
Welcome, Ms. Johnson.
Thank you. If you look at this map, Austin Drive's right on... It's off of North Cooper Lake, on the right, across from this green line. My house faces North Cooper Lake. I'm not in any subdivision. And I have a lot of the same concerns with the density. I heard, you know, I've been listening to the storm pipe, y'all talking about what we're going to do for the drainage for Bennett Woods. But I can tell you that there's a real issue right on this street, right in this area with this city sewer, which is backed up into my front yard and my home twice. I've had to have the city come out and basically pump and drain my yard. I have spent thousands of dollars installing certain things to keep the sewer out of my house. I can do nothing about it backing up into my yard. But you add such density on a single piece of property, and I think we're going to have a real problem. I am an attorney, not an engineer, so I cannot...
Let me just clarify. When you say sewer, I want to make sure we're talking about storm drain or sanitary sewer?
Sanitary sewer, like...
Oh, poo water.
Poop, poop. I actually ended up with tomato plants growing out right outside my door, along the front door from...
Interesting.
Yeah. Yellow and red tomatoes.
Much information.
Yeah. I'm just telling you, it's a real issue. Mr. Randall says that he, you know, the recession is over, people are buying properties. Well, people are also buying more expensive properties than just cluster home properties. And I think that, you know, if he wants to invest in Smyrna, he can build fewer homes on bigger pieces of property, charge more, and we have... We'd have a lot less concerns in the area.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Appreciate you coming out. All right. Is anybody else I'd like to come forward and speak in favor of or opposition to this application?
Hi. I'm Kay Clapper. I live at 3927 Plumcrest.
Welcome, Ms. Clapper.
I'm a little confused because are we supposed to assume that the future planning of Smyrna is to, on every acre that is developed, to take down all the trees and put as many houses as possible on each acre? If that's what he's saying, the density is going to get higher and higher. And I just can't believe that's what the people want in Smyrna. I am going to read from the zoning code for planned developments. "The development shall be compatible with the topography of the land and shall preserve any natural features." In my mind, natural features mean trees. Trees are very important in our neighborhood. We have old, mature trees. Trees conserve energy by reducing electric bills 15% to 20%. Trees in a landscape increase the salability and the value of the home by 20%. "One acre of mature trees absorbs six tons of carbon dioxide and releases four tons of oxygen, which is enough oxygen for 18 people to breathe for one year." Trees save water by less water runoff and erosion, which I think is a big problem with the density. It is also a home to birds and animals. Half of the native birds in Georgia are becoming extinct because of loss of habitat. It also is a calming effect. Where do you go when you want to de-stress? Do you go to a subdivision that has a home 10 feet apart? Or do you go where there are trees to relax? It also breaks up the urban heat islands of concrete resulting in cooler temperatures. I think that's one reason why we all bought homes in our neighborhood. The development... This is number two. "The development shall not adversely affect developed or undeveloped neighboring properties." We've already discussed the congestion, retention ponds. Retention ponds have been a problem in the neighborhood. They overflow. They have to be maintained. Is he going to come back when it floods somebody's house and maintain and clean that retention pond? Are the HOA people going to want to pay for that? There are all kinds of examples of the retention ponds, detention ponds, not working. We also have the oldest sewer system and water system in the county. The system is old. It backs up. It floods. There is water left in the roads every time we have two or three days of rain. This is number four by Chapter 10, Appendix A, Section 1008, number four. "Water and sewage, highway, and school facilities shall be adequate for the proposed development, or there shall be a definite proposal for making them so." We've already said, schools are packed solid. The roads are congested. The Braves Stadium is only going to bring more congestion. I believe an argument that the landowner said last time was that it would be more difficult to develop his land if it wasn't rezoned. And it would also give him an economic detriment. But there is a Georgia Supreme Court case, Dobson versus DeKalb, that has the same issue at hand, where they wanted to rezone so that they could build more buildings on the land. And they said that if they couldn't do that, they would be economically at a detriment. But this is what the court found. It said, "It is well-established that a significant detriment to the landowner is not shown by the fact that the property would be more valuable if rezoned, or by the fact that it would be more difficult to develop the property as zoned than if rezoned." That is to say, a plaintiff landowner cannot satisfy his burden by showing that property could be put to a more profitable use if rezoned. Land value always depends upon land use, and it is invariably that a more aggressive use of land by a landowner generally will increase a property's value. But in zoning challenges, the pertinent question is not whether the rezoning would increase the value of the property, but rather whether the existing zoning classification serves to deprive a landowner of property rights without due process of law. Hence, the evidence that the subject property would be more valuable if rezoned borders on being irrelevant. In cases such as this, the only relevant evidence regarding the value of the property is its value as it is currently zoned. RAD would be spot zoning into a neighborhood that is R-20 all around and in that neighborhood, and I am against it.
Thank you very much, Ms. Clapper. Listen, we're not going to have a hydrology debate tonight.
Actually, I'm...
Oh, I know. I'm playing with you. I'm completely playing with you.
I'm feisty, though, so...
I know. Welcome back. I just remembered you're a hydraulic engineer. Thank you.
I'm a bridge modeling for river streams. I work for a structural engineering firm. We build bridges. We got to see what the river does when it flows underneath.
Very cool. All right. Well, please state your name and address for the record, sign the sign-in sheet, and...
Okay. Get the clock started. All right. I am Alan Wenzel. I live at 4040 Manson Avenue in Bennett Woods. And I'll get to the hydraulic stuff in just a minute, but I'm not as fired up about that tonight as I was before. We don't really begrudge the property owner having a chance to make a dollar. That's fine. Where I live at, it's right on the pipeline. If I could work out a deal with Colonial, I could put in one heck of a convenience store and sell a lot of gas. But that ain't going to happen, I know. But it needs to be consistent with the adjoining community. And I spoke at the meeting back in June, and every voice, except for the property owner and the developer, were in opposition to this. We had a town hall meeting after that. Every voice, except for the developer and the property owner, were in opposition. And we're seeing the same pattern here tonight. Res zoning this to RAD and with this density is inconsistent with the goals of the comprehensive plan for the City of Smyrna. I went and pulled the development map today for the City of Smyrna, the future development map, and this area is shown as suburban residential. Then you go to the handy table on page 22, and RAD is not shown as being a corresponding zoning for suburban residential. So this is really inconsistent with what the comprehensive plan is for this area. Let me go ahead and talk about the hydraulic issues. I'm an engineer. We can figure out a way to make this work, at least getting it into the storm sewer system done at Highview and Plumcrest. That'll work. After that, I don't know. People anecdotally tell me it floods. I've checked the FEMA map. It's not in a FEMA flood zone. Great opportunity for them to buy flood insurance that are reduced rate because it's not in a flood zone. They're not required to have it, but if they feel the risk is there, it's a great opportunity to buy it for cheap. But like I said, this is inconsistent with the goals of the comprehensive plan for zoning in the City of Smyrna. Now, they say that RAD is not all that bad. Well, in the zoning ordinance for the city, RAD is shown as having a minimum lot size of 15,000 square feet. They're requesting a variance down to 9,000 square feet as a minimum lot size. That doesn't sound like a good thing. And most of the lots are under 11,000 square feet. Now statistically, it's, you know, an average lot size of 10,000, 11,000 square feet. Mark Twain has a very famous quote about statistics. There's liars, there's liars, and there's statistics. You can get him to say whatever you want him to say. I did note that there is a huge reduction in green space in the proposed plan this time around from what he had before, the one that y'all voted down, said no to. 46,000 square feet of green space, this plan, 6,000 feet of green space. An 85% reduction in green space. That's not good. I think everyone would agree, that's not good. That gets the RAD to go, "Bad." Now, the density, the density is greater this time than what you all disapproved of last time. 2.60 last time, 2.67 this time. Greater density. That doesn't sound like an improvement to me. It goes RAD, goes to bad. Not good. Now, the developer has told us about this amenity feature that's being included in. I want to put this in perspective to you. When you park your car out here tonight, the size of this amenity would fit in a single parking space with room left over. That's not good. That's a small, very small amenity. I don't think it improves anything other than having a nice little hut. It's just inconsistent. It doesn't fit in with the R-20 that surrounds it on every point of the compass. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wenzel. All right. Good evening and welcome.
I am Laura Lamb, 526 Pine View Drive. Please bear with me, I have a lot of paperwork here.
Welcome back.
All right. So I've been doing a lot of reading, and per the Appendix A zoning preamble and enactment clause of the zoning board, "For the purpose of promoting the health, safety, morals, convenience, order, prosperity of the general welfare of the present and future inhabitants of the City of Smyrna by lessening congestion in the streets, security, safety from fire, panic, and other dangers, providing adequate light and air, preventing the overcrowding of land, avoiding undue concentration of population, facilitating the adequate provision of transportation, water, sewers, schools, parks, and other public requirements, protecting property against blight and depreciation, encouraging the most appropriate use of land, buildings, and other structures throughout the city, all in accordance with a comprehensive plan the mayor and the council of the City of Smyrna do hereby ordain and enact into law and thereby incorporate into the City Code of Smyrna, Georgia, the following articles and sections." That in itself explains what we're holding the city accountable for, for this property, is to protect those who are taxpayers and are here asking for the protection of the land surrounding these neighborhoods. The comprehensive plan that's talked about here, if you look in your online, the Smyrna library, it's called the Mini Code or whatever online, has cited, per through 2030, a comprehensive zoning plan for the area. If you look that up on your own time, or if you have, you will notice that the area surrounding current and the current land that wants to be developed is Zone R-20. Nothing else in the future was planned for that. I don't think we need to bow down to developers because they have the money. It's not like you go to an interview and take the first offer just because they have it. And I feel that that's what is going on here. We have a land, it is precious land. We understand that. And that is why, as neighbors to this land, we don't just want to take someone coming in and ruining this land per the code alone. I want to address RAD from R-20, rather than you're taking from R-20, R-15, R-12 to RAD, RAD conditional. You're taking all these steps down when any of the other ones, R-15 or R-20, will be better neighbors' development to the surrounding neighborhood. Per the comprehensive plan... zoning plan for the area. If you looked that up on your own time or if you have, you will notice that the areas surrounding current and the current land that wants to be developed is Zone R-20. Nothing else in the future was planned for that. I don't think we need to bow down to developers because they have the money. It's not like you go to interview and take the first offer just because they have it. And I feel that that's what is going on here. We have a land. It is precious land. We understand that. And that is why, as neighbors to this land, we don't just want to take someone coming in and ruining this land per the code alone. I want to address RAD from R-20, rather than you're taking from R-20, R-15, R-12, to RAD, RAD conditional. You're taking all these steps down when any of the other ones, R-15 or R-20, will be better neighbors' development to the surrounding neighborhood. Per the comprehensive plan, in that, well, actually, this is still the enactment in that, in 10 Clause, Purpose, Section 301, the city of Smyrna, Georgia, does ordain and enact into law the following articles and sections for the following purposes: to encourage economically sound and stable land development; to assure the provision of required streets, utilities, and other facilities and services to land development; to assure the provision of needed public open spaces and building sites in land developments through the dedication and reservation of land for recreational, educational, and other public purposes; to assure the adequate provision of safe and convenient traffic access and circulation, both vehicular and pedestrian, which I don't believe this one does on entering North Cooper. If you've ever been there during traffic at 5:00, it's a very walkable community. Try crossing the street with kids. Try the school buses. Try load and unload right there. To assure that the land is developed in conformity with the comprehensive plan of the city of Smyrna, Georgia, the intent of this regulation is to provide harmonious development of the city and to ensure a coordinated development pattern with adequate provisions for traffic, recreation, drainage, sewers, and other technical elements of land subdivision, which is clearly, as you have seen, the opposition, and plenty of information given to you is not doing so. This control is necessary to assure the maximum return on private and governmental investments, at the same time afford the homeowner protection and assure the subdiver full consideration of his interests and responsibilities. So far, as you have heard, the homeowner protection from the side of the ones living there, not the developers, will be completely ignored if this is continued forward. Under Chapter 54, Floods, I'm not aware he might have, but under the D, "The base flood elevation data shall be provided for subdivision proposals and all other proposed development, including manufactured home parks and subdivisions, greater than 50 lots or five acres, whichever is less." I don't think we have seen, considering the issues with Bennett Woods, any base flood elevation data to prove that this will really work. We're still kind of iffy that, yes, there's, things have been done to promote the flood, help drainage issue, but we are not gods. Just like the one on the street on the right, they had everything figured out, and those neighbors down there are dealing with some big issues. And they have taken pictures and sent them our way. We can forward them to you if you need to of the amount of water they're dealing with in that direction. If you let me finish, also, under our sections of our policies, under the comprehensive plan, goals, and policies, is to protect and preserve established residential neighborhoods. Policy 1.1, ensure adequate buffering and screening in order to protect residential neighborhoods from negative impacts of adjacent development. Towering homes behind my backyard is not protecting my neighborhood and my residents. Policy 1.2, ensure that infield housing development is compatible with surrounding established neighborhood. Nothing of this infield development or spot zoning is compatible with surrounding neighborhoods. Goal number eight, natural and cultural resources. Protect natural resources and sensitive environmental features from encroachment by development. 8.2 and 8.3, address sensitive areas to be used for green space or areas of construction subdivision designation for community open space. Goal 18.2 ensures infield development is compatible with surrounding neighborhood, actually repeats, that's a goal. And goal 19.10, require traffic analysis as the condition of development to potential traffic impacts related to proposed sites. I don't know if that has been seen either. 19.11, any development that generates more than 5:00 PM peak hour traffic should prepare traffic impact study and define plan to address. And these are all goals from the city that were posted, and if this is where Smyrna wants to move forward, I believe this should be where we should be moving forward and holding our developers accountable for developments they want to bring into our city. On the water, no amount of water engineering can foresee the real outcome examples, as the neighbors already have stated. And final, just to address the good neighbor comment, the one thing we have addressed is that we're not opposed to land being developed. We know in Smyrna it is becoming that. Any land that we have is going to be developed. A good neighbor will listen to the neighbors and help and address that. Instead, we actually have more houses in the lot now. Instead of 14 off the road, we have 15. That is not a good neighbor. We went from the 2.6 to 2.67. The density has not decreased, deceiving not where to, and it's been deceiving the number of how it's been presented. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm doing my best. We want to get everybody a chance to speak, guys. That's why we put them on the timer. But thank you very much for your comments.
They would like to give me a minute if no one else is speaking. I just want to also, if you have time, look under your comprehensive plan. There is a housing need table 19 that was posted, and it actually shows income, rent, and house payment, and the surplus or deficit. And currently, in the housing market that's being proposed, we have a surplus of homes, not a deficit. So that you might have to consider how well they really are going to sell.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening and welcome.
I'm Liz Christopher. I live at 460 Cooper Woods Court. I live at the end of North Cooper Lake.
Could you say your name again? I'm sorry.
Liz Christopher.
Ms. Christopher, okay.
I just want to say, again, development is going to happen. I think it needs to be done responsibly. I don't think the two O'Dwyer developments that are currently going on were responsibly approved. Those houses are ridiculously close together. You have, like, decimated forests or wooded areas. And with this new development that you're considering, there's another 15 homes, and that's about 98 more cars that are going to be going up and down North Cooper Lake. I don't know if anybody lives back there and tries to get out in the morning, trying to get on Concord Road, or, well, Reed Road wouldn't be really impacted, but it's 100 new cars that are going to be on a two-lane road. So I just wish that, you know, future development is done responsibly. I don't think we need 15 homes, you know, where you could touch one side to the next. It could be done responsibly, maybe charge a little bit more. I would be very happy to have a bigger lot and pay more money. I am sure other people would feel the same way. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Christopher. Anybody else? Okay. Now, without causing a riot, you guys seem very tame tonight. We do have Smyrna's finest in the back of the room, so if we get out of hand. Guys, listen, we've given, we've given about approximately 12 minutes to the applicant and about 35 minutes to you all to speak. Now, in fairness to the applicant, I'm not going to open this back up to comments, but in fairness to the applicant, I'm going to let him come up and address anything he wants to address. And he doesn't have to come up if he doesn't want to. But in fairness, I don't think, I think the disparity from 35 minutes to 12 minutes is a little out of whack. So in fairness to him, if he wants to come up and address any of the concerns, or Mr. Randall, you want us to go ahead and make a motion?
There are a couple of things I'd like to say, because I probably could have been clearer on a couple of things that I said before. I heard someone kind of beat cluster home to death. And if you think 50 to 55-foot wide product is cluster home, then throw me in that briar patch. My idea of cluster home is 25 to 30 feet wide. But a 55-foot wide product is a very generous product. The 10-foot side yard is a minimum. We will probably have most side yards in the 15-foot range. When you zone property, or 20-foot, it just depends. You know, when you zone property, you have to put specifications, bad, good, or indifferent, you have to use something. RAD uses 10-foot side yards. We're not asking for anything out of the ordinary there. Yes, we ask for a 9,000-square-foot lot, but RAD has been given 9,000-square-foot lots all up and down North Cooper Lake Road. I keep hearing density. Oh, this thing is density. The density is out of control. It's too much. It's too much. Our density is 2.67 units per acre. And again, like it or not like it, I'm not making a judgment call. I'm just telling you, here's the reality. Westbrook Place is 2.74, higher density. The Park at North Cooper Lake, 2.74, higher density. North Cooper Lake Place, 2.96, higher density. Again, I'm not, you know, you have to make that call. Yes, I'm building a pavilion, but, and I tell you, I guess I put that in the category, no good deed goes unpunished. I don't know that anybody else is building pavilions with 15 lots. At least my homeowners will have some place to go, other than the overcrowded city parks. Well, but understand, I think the planning commission wants open space. Every planning commission I appear for says, "Build something," but I also have to build something that can be reasonably maintained by the homeowners. You know, 15 people can't support a junior Olympic pool, but they can support a small gathering place. That's all we were trying to do. But I'm getting thrown under the bus for that, and I guess, I guess I'm a little bit, you know, taken aback. No plan is perfect. I don't claim this plan is perfect, but it's a whole lot better than where we started. We've tried to address the concerns. We're not asking for anything that's out of the ordinary. I also think that, you know, the whole green space and all this, you know, green space is either green space out, separated, or it's in somebody's yard. We heard loud and clear, you know, we want bigger lots last time. We put the green space in the lots as best we could. So again, I will go back to, I just got through doing a development in West Cobb County. The lot sizes range from 8,000 square feet to 27,000 square feet. They're side by side. They're across the street. Most people, myself included, can't drive down the street and tell the difference between an 8,000-square-foot lot and a 20,000-square-foot lot. Now, if you get in the backyard, you start doing measurements, yes, but from the streetscape, because everybody builds to the front setback, from the streetscape, oftentimes, you can't tell that difference. We would ask that this project be approved. We are trying to be a good neighbor, and we appreciate the commission taking the time this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Randall. All right. You guys have any questions for Mr. Randall while before he leaves? Anybody? That's my fault. I shouldn't let you go. Any questions for Mr. Randall this time? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Having said all that, we've got... I made a mess up here. And this is Z-15-007. We need a motion.
On zoning request Z-15007, rezoning from R-20 to RAD conditional for the development of 16 single-family homes, 6.15 acres, landlot 338. I make a motion, we deny.
Okay. Please hold it down, guys. The, what'd you say? He needs to read it again because... The request is for 15. The request is for 15. Can you just... Can you check what he's reading? Okay.
Change that from 16 to 15, single-family homes.
Did it change your motion?
No, I'm not changing my motion.
Motion to deny, Mr. Rice. Just making sure. Do we have a second? There is no second. Is that right? I'm sorry? There's no second. So that motion has failed. Oh. Oh, Ms. Lightfoot. Motion has a second, Ms. Lightfoot. So a motion to deny the application and a second from Ms. Lightfoot. All in favor of the motion to deny, please vote, or... The motion to deny has failed. All right. The motion to deny has failed. We need a motion on this application. Do we have another motion?
I would like to make a motion that we approve the zoning request Z-15-07, rezoning from R-20 to RAD conditional for the development of 16, 15, single-family homes. I think it's on 5.56 acres, landlot 338, 3744 Plumcrest Road.
We have a motion to approve, Mr. Campo. We have a second, Mr. Seagraves. Please vote. The motion is approved, 5-2. All right. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you so much for coming out tonight. I really appreciate all your comments. The final order of business is approval from the minutes, approval of the minutes. Where is the minutes?
Make a motion.
June 8th. Hold on a second. I got to read it. Approval of the minutes from the June 8th meeting, is that correct? Approval of the minutes from June 8th.
I make a motion that we...
Motion, Mr. Whittington, to approve, second, Ms. Lightfoot. All in favor of approving the minutes? We need two more votes, guys. Campo and Seagraves, please vote. The minutes are approved, 7-0. All right. Sorry. I know what I'm doing. We'll sit here a couple more minutes for that. Now, this meeting's adjourned at 7:46. I parked out front tonight.
Thanks, man. See you in one... Hey. What? He's gone until Monday?
No.
No, okay. We need to get together either tomorrow or Wednesday.
Yeah, we'll see you in a couple weeks.
Monday, today's Monday. Today I have a meeting with Georgia UDC. It's probably early in the morning. Tomorrow is...
That way, we're just trying to get it over to UDC earlier than later. Okay. When I get there, and I'll check with Joey and Tom and see what...
Thank you. Appreciate the support.
See you, buddy. Take care.
Thanks, Joel.